What evening. It is six thirty PM and I am calling the Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Planning Commission meeting to order. Tonight's Planning Commission meeting is structured to allow virtual participation on Zoom or participation in person while following social distance and mask guidelines. Members of the public are welcome and encouraged to participate when invited throughout the meeting. If you are participating virtually and experience audio problems, we suggest you leave the Zoom meeting and then rejoin. This has usually fixed the issue. Additionally, or additional instructions on how to participate are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in the public meeting calendar. As usual, tonight's meeting is available live and recorded for later viewing on BCTV and on the city's website. If you are unable to participate this evening and would like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. You may participate in the meeting tonight online by going to zoom.us backslash join and typing in meeting ID nine six zero one three two one zero six two five. Once you're, once you are logged into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which item you wish to speak to. You may also call into the meeting at six five one three seven two eight two nine nine and enter meeting ID nine six zero one three two one zero six two five. Your call will be muted until there is an agenda item that contains a public hearing. I will provide further instruction and notify you when you may speak. Please note, there may be a slight delay due to the differences in technology. If speaking by phone, please mute your computer to avoid any feedback. Now onto the agenda. The first item of tonight's Planning Commission meeting is adoption of the agenda. Do any members of the Planning Commission have any changes to the agenda? Okay, none here. Any from staff?
No changes.
None from staff. So I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
All right. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. And the motion carries. All right. The next item is to approve the meeting minutes from the August twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commissioners, any changes to the minutes from the last meeting?
No.
Okay. Staff, any changes?
No changes from staff.
All right. May I have a motion?
I'd move that we approve the minutes from last meeting.
Mr. John, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. And all those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose say nay. And the motion carries. And I vote aye on both of those items. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on the application of Weekly Homes LLC for development stage planned unit development, floodplain conditional use permit to allow work in the floodplain of North Twin Lake, shoreline conditional use permit for impervious surface coverage, shoreline variance for setbacks, lot width and lot area, preliminary and final plat of a fifty-two unit residential townhome plat to be known as Twin Lakes Residential Second Edition. City Planner Deb Garros will provide a presentation of the item and an overview of the background report. Ms. Garros.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As indicated, this application is a, for development stage planned unit development. There are a number of other items that go along with that, including conditional use permits, some shoreline variances, and also preliminary and final plat. And the project is a fifty-two unit townhome project. The, on the screen is the location of the subject site. The entire site is known right now as Outlots A and B of Twin Lakes Residential Edition. It is, it was platted back in March of two thousand and nineteen when the property to the north of the Rise On Grand was platted. And in order to develop the site at this point in time, they need to replat those outlots because outlots are not buildable, so they need to rebuild or replat those two lots in order for it to be buildable. The entire property area that we're talking about is twenty-three point five acres. And then, again, we're talking about the fifty-two unit townhomes. That is going to be proposed on Lot One, Block Two. And that is basically an eight point nine acre lot. Will be known as reserve as twin, at Twin Lakes for the PUD. Then Outlet A, which is to the right on this screen, Outlet A, when that was platted in two thousand and nineteen, is private open space. And there was a condition at that point in time with the PUD that that outlet be combined with this parcel. The developer, the applicant, when they came in for the application was not aware of this requirement. They did have meetings with the property owner. And what has occurred is the outlet will be combined, but it'll be combined with Lot Two instead of with this townhome project. The subject site, as I indicated, is twenty-three point five acres. It is located on the north side of South Cross Drive. It has North Twin Lakes, which is at the south, southeast corner. And then, just to the north is a regional pond, and we're going to be talking about that. That regional pond used to be a wetland, and in two thousand and thirteen, it was expanded and dug out to provide stormwater management and also water clarity for the overall system within the city. And then, the rest of the site, just to call your attention, on the west side, along Grand, there are commercial condominiums, which were platted many years ago and have been in existence for many years. Otherwise, the site is vacant. To the very north is the Rise On Grand apartment building, which was phase one of this planned unit development, and that is currently under construction. And then, to the east, there are single-family townhomes. To the south, there are single-family neighborhoods. And then, along the Frontage Road, there are some twin homes. For the application, as I indicated, there are a number of elements to this. Conditional use permit is needed for the following things. There are three floodplain areas on the site, which we'll look at in a moment. They are proposed to be filled. And in order to do that, a conditional use permit for the floodplain ordinance is required. In addition, if you're adding more than a thousand cubic yards of fill material, that also requires conditional use permit. That's a floodplain standard as well. And then, in the shoreline district, if you are going to have impervious surface exceeding thirty percent, you can go all the way up to fifty percent, but you do need a conditional use permit in order to do that. And also, they need to provide for surface water management of certain rain events in order to be able to do that. But it is allowed with either conditional use permit or a planned unit development. Because this is shoreline, we have to process it as a conditional use permit. And the last item is something that you have seen many times before. Anytime we have two or more structures that are proposed on a lot, they, that needs to be done by conditional use permit or PUD. So those are the, the conditional use permits. In terms of the variances, the majority of the variances, or actually, all of them, are related to because the site is in the shoreline district, meaning it's within a thousand feet of both north and south Twin Lakes. And the way that Burnsville's shoreline ordinance was adopted back in the nineties, there were specific provisions, and the DNR allowed the city to come up with the unique facets of the city and apply them in the shoreline ordinance. One of those things, however, is that the shoreline regulations do not recognize the city's current planned unit development process. So if there are any deviations that are needed for a project, we need to process a separate, either conditional use permit or shoreline variance for anything that we would typically do through a deviation. And that's virtually because the way the ordinance was adopted, and the city does need FEMA and, or actually, DNR approval for our shoreline ordinance, and then for floodplain FEMA, but the DNR also is the local, I guess, regional jurisdiction that we apply to. So in terms of variances from shoreline standards, and some of these standards are different than what we'd see in the mixed district. One of them is to allow a twenty-foot versus thirty-foot townhome front yard setback. And the application includes a private street typically for a townhome development. We have a twenty-foot setback that's applied throughout the community, but the shoreline ordinance calls for thirty feet, so we have to apply a variance for that. Staff does support this variance application. Then we have setbacks from the private street. Typically, they are a thirty-foot setback, and this is measured from the, actually, the back of the curb to the units. And in this case, there are three units that have either a ten or eleven-foot setback from that private street as opposed to the thirty-foot setback. Staff is not supporting these variances for these three. The next one is for lakeshore setback, and this is to north Twin Lakes. And the reason that this is listed, there are actually two different conflicting standards in the shoreline district. If you are developing an existing lot, then the structure setback is a hundred and fifty feet, measured from the ordinary high watermark of the lake. However, if you're plating a property next to a natural environment lake, then the setback is increased to two hundred feet. So two separate, two separate standards. And I'll explain later, but staff is in support of the variance for the hundred and fifty-foot versus two hundred-foot setback, and I will get into that when we look at the plat. And then also, there are lot area and width standards for the shoreline district that are different than our standards in, for our twin home developments or townhome developments. So those are variances that are requested as well. And staff is supportive of those variances, and I'll explain why in a couple of minutes. The variance guideline policy that the city council adopted is attached. There were nine positive, eight negative, and two not applicable factors in that. As you are aware, the variance guideline policy is used on all variance applications so that we can look at them with kind of a consistent lens in their application. So as far as the project itself, the planned unit development that was approved, including the first phase of Rise On Grand, was approved in March of two thousand and nineteen. However, this project really started its review through the city council back in two thousand and seventeen, where there was a concept plan that was presented. Then in two thousand and eighteen, there was a comprehensive plan amendment for the entire site to change it from business to mixed use. And then, also, in the two thousand and eighteen, an environmental assessment worksheet was prepared for the Rise On Grand project because of the overall density. I'm sorry. The PUD, what I wanted to reflect here is where we're looking at the townhomes on the severally part of the site. That was approved for fifty-two units, townhome units. And then, Phase Three is a future phase, and that is another apartment building that would be proposed on the second lot that's being plotted tonight, and that would come in at, at some point in the future when someone purchases that property. As far as the, the subject site, there are some conditions on the site which make development a little bit difficult, or they have to do some additional work on that. This shows from the Dakota County Soil Survey, the area in the red hatch mark area is areas of hydroic soils, and those are soils that are not generally conducive to supporting foundations and streets. So what happens is when you have hydroic soils, you usually have to dig those out and then bring in good, good fill. At some point in time, also, there was fill added on this site. We don't have the information as to when, but basically, what will happen for this development, there's going to be a lot of grading and a lot of earthwork that is going to be associated with this. They have, I believe, between seven and nineteen feet of basically poor soils that they need to take out and then bring in good soils. So they did know, we did know that there's an area of hydroic soils, and the reason that I'm talking about this is to get to the floodplain, which is next. On this, it's a little bit difficult to see, but in the red, there are three small areas, and they're just to the left of the regional pond. Those areas are actually FEMA floodplain. And those areas are proposed to be excavated and filled. So with the application, then, what the applicant needs to do is, when they're filling, they need the conditional use permit, which we're processing. And then, in addition to that, they will have to go through and amend the FEMA floodplain maps to actually remove those areas of floodplain from the maps. And there is a specific process that goes along with that, and we have added those as conditions. In addition to the three small areas of floodplain, there's also, just on the southwest corner of North Twin Lake, there's some floodplain in that area as well. However, there's not going to be any grading or work done in that area. So the, the primary aspects of this, when we're dealing with floodplain conditional use permit, is related to those three more central areas that are proposed to be filled. What I'm showing here is, on the left, is the planned unit development concept plan that, that council approved back in March of two thousand and nineteen. And then, on the right, is the development application that you have before you tonight. They both contain fifty-two townhome units. The major differences between the two projects are that when the townhome PUD was looked at, the concept in two thousand and nineteen, they did not contemplate or know that they would need to have a stormwater pond on site. So there is a stormwater pond in this proposal that was not shown or not thought of initially at that concept stage. Also, the number of units, although there are fifty-two units, they're arranged differently, and there's a different number of buildings. For the concept PUD, they have, I believe, one triplex, and then the rest are a mix of quad and then five-unit buildings. So they have fewer overall buildings, but they're longer, more units each. And then, what the applicant is showing is, they are also showing the private road, very similar. They have their stormwater reuse pond, which we'll talk about, but that's in the center. And then, they are proposing the units basically around the private road. So same number of units, different layout. And the proposal has, their highest is a quad unit, so four units attached, so they have a mix of three and four-unit attached buildings as opposed to the three to five-unit As I indicated, in the central part of the development site, there's a reuse pond proposed. Because the site has clay soils, infiltration is not workable at this site, but they do have to provide for rate control. And basically, what they're proposing is a reuse pond, which is a little bit different than the typical stormwater ponds you've seen. They are proposing this reuse pond, and what they will do is they will actually irrigate using the water from this reuse pond. So that is something, that is a similar concept that is being done at the city's new fire station. But otherwise, I don't believe we have other projects that have done this. And then, they are showing, basically, it's a private street. It will access from the existing access point on South Cross Drive West, come up, and it's a circle street. There's no other access to any other properties. It's just the one access, and again, for the fifty-two units. They have thirty-six guest parking spaces throughout the development project, which exceeds the ordinance standard of thirteen. But they, they do have those throughout the development. And then, they are proposing on the south side, between the park and, I believe it's Block Six, that would be an area for private, for their dogs, you know, taking your dogs out to the dog park or runs or those types of things. And what I wanted to show or bring out in this slide is that, it's kind of hard to see, but there is a red mark that is, it kind of comes across where the private road is, and that is the two hundred-foot setback, which would be four new plats in a, adjacent to a natural environment lake. The other two blue lines, the one closest, is the hundred and fifty-foot setback. The way that this project has been laid out, the, for the most part, the units do not encroach into those setbacks. There are a couple of units on the very southeast side that would, if we use the two hundred-foot setback, but they're proposing the hundred and fifty-foot setback. Staff is supportive of that because, in addition to setback, there are standards for what's called shore bluff impact zones, and that's usually half of the setback. So what will happen is even though the setback here is going to be a hundred and fifty feet instead of two hundred, you still don't have units that are proposed within the majority of that area, just a small corner of that most southeasterly building. And then, in addition to that, basically, you're going to have a hundred and fifty feet of open area where there will be no impacts at all to the shoreline. And with the two hundred-foot setback, you typically have a hundred foot or half the setback. Here, you'll have a hundred and fifty feet where there'll be no disturbances. So that is why staff is in support of those variances. In terms of the development summary chart, basically, we've gone over the acreages. There is some existing impervious surface on the site where the city accesses the ponds to the west and Twin Lake for infrastructure purposes, and that's about one percent of the overall site. They are proposing forty-three percent impervious surface coverage. They can have up to fifty, so they're doing lesser impervious surface than they could. And then, that was, that corresponds to then fifty-seven percent open space, which is, again, above and beyond the fifty percent. In terms of parking, they comply with the ordinance. They're actually providing more parking than is required by providing those extra guest parking spaces. What is on this plan, this is the stormwater plan, and what this is showing is basically, in that central area, from the stormwater to the regional pond, there will be an overflow pipe that is located in that area, primarily with the stormwater. In the engineering section of the report, they talked about the need to provide additional stormwater management for this area, and actually, a larger part of the region. So the city has been working with not only the applicant, but the property owner, and the property owner has agreed to work with the city to look at improving or making improvements to that regional pond, possibly to expand that so that it can take additional stormwater and surface water. Part of the reason that that's needed is that, as you all know, we've been having a lot more of these heavy rains and a lot faster, much higher volumes. Those changes, plus some additional changes in just how rainfall is measured and the datum that's used for that, the city has updated its stormwater management plan and found that they do need to expand the regional pond in order to provide for flood control, stormwater management, and then also to help improve the water quality, South Twin Lakes and other lakes beyond. That study, the city council approved last week at the city council meeting to undertake that study. That will be working on, over the next several months, there will be separate public open house meetings for that. And then, they will be developing a plan and working with property owners, including the areas of South Twin Lake, this area, and then others along the way that are impacted. They anticipate that that study will be done and that they can start making improvements. The city basically making the improvements to the regional pond sometime next year, which would be about the same time as the developer is going to be doing a lot of their grading and starting their construction. This site is the grading plan. Also, already had indicated in some locations, they're looking at excavation depths, again, between seventeen, or excuse me, seven and nineteen and a half feet. And then, this is the sewer and water plan. Generally, there is sewer service available from South Cross Drive. And then also, there's a sewer line that was put in, basically, to the west of North Twin Lake and the regional pond, and it heads all the way up to Grand Avenue by the Rise On Grand. And that, that open space, or excuse me, that area where the city maintenance facilities are accessed, that is an unimproved roadway and will serve as a, an unimproved trail that the public can use to basically walk all the way back around those stormwater ponds and the, and the lake. So that will, that will continue to, to be there. On this plan, what I wanted to show, this is the overall PUD again. The red hatched areas are areas where they thought there would be tree removal for development of all three phases out there. The applicant has been able to, they've modified their plan, and basically, the two areas on the south that are circled in red are areas where trees will be retained, so they will not need to remove as many trees as originally thought. So they're able to retain those, which is considered to be a benefit to the overall This shows a little bit better. You can see the access, the current access, and then the maintenance road, basically, and that unimproved trail that goes all the way up and connects South Cross to Grand Avenue to the north. In terms of the landscape plan, the applicant has provided a great deal of landscaping. They are asking for a PUD deviation to put in fewer shrubs than the ordinance standard. Staff is supportive of that PUD deviation because they're saving a lot more of the existing mature trees on site. In addition to that, with the reuse pond that they have to put in, and also maintaining and not doing grading and excavation work closer to North Twin Lake, they have fewer areas for planting. They are planting the required number of trees throughout the development. They're saving more than they needed to. They have less overall impervious surface than was required. So staff is supportive of the landscape plan. We do have a condition in that they do need to modify some of the plant material amounts because the city has got a twenty-five percent standard, maximum standard for the types of materials. They want to have diversity in the plants and trees that are planted, so we've asked them to take a look at the, at the landscape plan and just modify those numbers to meet that twenty-five percent requirement. This slide shows the landscaping around the units, how that will be, how that will be done. And we've got, basically, they are providing more perimeter, building perimeter landscaping, about seventy-five percent as opposed of the fifty-foot standard. So again, staff is supportive of this. They're also irrigating the site. The green areas in the development area show what will be irrigated, so that is a positive for the PUD as well. And those irrigation, again, will occur from the reuse pond. In terms of the townhome units themselves, this is the front side of the units, and in this development, the front side is the side that faces the water bodies, if you will, as opposed to what we typically consider the front facing the street. So these will be facing, all will be facing either water bodies, the regional, or... the regional, or the regional pond and North Twin Lake, the reuse pond that they are putting in, or we've got, there are a set of units to the south side of that road that will be facing wooded area towards South Cross Drive. And then the side and rear yard. Basically, on the bottom, this is what you'll see from the street when you're driving through, primarily just the garage doors and then second-story windows. The heights of the building do conform to the thirty-foot building height standard, so there are no issues with respect to that. There are four different color schemes that are contemplated and we've provided the colors and sample materials for you. And what we've done is just shown here, this shows all four units. The applicant did identify that because of the coloring of the prints can be off, the actual materials are provided as well, so you can see the actual color samples. So this would be the front of the units. And then this, we just took one of the concepts, one of the color schemes out of the four to show the other sides of the units. And they have the floor plans. All of the units provide for two-car garage. They have two-car parking on the driveway. And then in addition to that, I believe they're all three-bedroom units and are two floors each. There are three different options that buyers can choose from in terms of how they want to finish their product or what product they're interested in. And price ranges and the applicant can address any questions that you may have related to that. In terms of the PUD benefits, we talked about some of them. And just to get to that point here, sorry. For the benefits, we included that the applicant is going to complete two of the three phases, which includes a mix of residential housing types. This again, townhomes, where the other two phases are apartments. Townhome product will relate to a wide range of consumers. They will also serve first-time homebuyers and younger families. Unique features to the development include internal sidewalks. All of the units will be accessed from a private sidewalk where you walk around the building to the other side that's facing the lake to get to the units. They are also, they will have a communal fire pit on the reuse pond. And then we talked about the dog park or open space area. Townhome project provides fifty-seven percent is green space, exceeding the ordinance standard. Over seventy-five percent of the perimeter of the townhomes are landscaped, exceeding the fifty percent standard. And they will be saving additional wooded areas on the site, which is a valuable asset to the application. In terms of PUD deviations, these are very similar to the variance, the shoreline variances. And from a staff standpoint, the staff is in support of the deviation to allow fewer shrubs than the landscape ordinance requires. We do have issues, however, with the, with the proposal. Let me go back here to a good plan. We do have issues with the distance between the buildings. The standard is twenty feet. The applicant is proposing about eleven feet between the buildings. We don't have another development in an area outside of, and I did not look at Heart of the City because that is a completely different district. But twenty feet is really minimal amount. The whole purpose is for air, light, noise. And in addition to that, we have a fifteen-foot building separation standard, which is the only other standard in the ordinance. But that's only for garage units to be fifteen feet apart. So this is a very minimal standard, and staff is supportive of maintaining the standard as it is. In addition to that, there are three units on the, basically on the corners that have a setback between ten or eleven feet from the curb of the private street that would typically have a twenty-foot setback at minimum. If this were a, on a public road, you would have additional area because the public road is going to have right-of-way. So you have a boulevard in between, so your setback would say typically be twenty feet. Then you'd have up to fifteen feet of boulevard and then the street. In this case, they're showing ten or eleven feet for those three units from the actual back of the curb of the road. And the staff is not supportive of that and is suggesting that the twenty-foot standard be maintained on that as well. And with that, leave that. We did have a neighborhood meeting, and this was identified in the background report, which we summarized. It was a Zoom meeting and that was held on September third. We did notify the Department of Natural Resources and Dakota County of the project. And we did not receive comments back from them to date. And with that, we have the recommendations, which are in your background report. And I can go through those if you want me to or if you have questions on specific ones, I would be glad to entertain those also. Just to let you know, if you do decide to approve the variances and PUD deviations for the building setback and between the units, all you would need to do then is to remove conditions one and two from the recommendation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Deb. I guess commissioners, at this time, I would open it up for questions for Ms. Garros before we move on to any additional information from the applicant. Yes, Commissioner Jen.
So this is a two-phase project, maybe a three-phase project. And is it all the same owner of the land? Is it same developer?
Different developer. The owner of the land currently is, I believe, Healy Ramey, and they have a purchase agreement with Weekly Homes for the second phase. And then the third phase would be probably a different developer that would be sold separately as well.
And is there any conditions or anything when they did the phase one? Or they expected to do phase two? Or did it have to go through the process? Or they were well aware that it'd have to go through a process before they got phase two in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They received concept PUD only on phase two and three. So that requires them to come back through development stage and then to plat those out lots.
Okay. And then with the eleven feet, you said air, light, and noise were the reasons we didn't want to separate any more than eleven feet. Was there anything else? Was there anything that rain runoff or anything like that? Is there any other bigger reasons behind the difference between eleven feet and fifteen feet and twenty feet?
Primarily, the buildings will be sprinkled. They're required to do so for fire code, so that is a positive thing. But what you have is basically the separation is measured from the foundation. They're going to have overhangs on these buildings, so they're actually going to be even closer than eleven feet. And from a staff standpoint, we did not find any other deviations for other townhome projects. And when you go out and drive by townhome projects and they only have twenty feet, it doesn't look like a whole lot. And really, it's a matter of, yeah, what you can hear from, you know, the adjacent property owner's light and those types of things are typically where building separation standards come from.
So there isn't any worries about fire going from one building to the other or anything like that?
I wouldn't say there's no worry. I mean, if you have wind, you're going to have that. But these are going to be protected more so than some of the other developments that don't have fire suppression in the buildings. So I'd say it's lesser of a concern here than it might be in, in other developments where the buildings are not sprinkled.
I think that is everything I, oh, the sewage. Or the sewage, the sewage is all stormwater. It's not sewage. The drain.
The, from the pond?
Yeah.
Yes, that is, that would be basically, yes, surface water only. They will have sanitary sewer, which they'll be hooked up to the city's sanitary sewer system and water system. And then there is also stormwater improvements in the area as well.
Sure, Rod?
I'm looking at the plan, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but the driveways, really the setback from the street is really the length of the driveway. Is that, am I understanding that?
Yes, they're twenty feet.
So the driveways are twenty feet?
Yes.
And there's a few units where the driveways are less than twenty feet?
I don't believe so. I think the minimum is twenty feet. There are a few that are longer than twenty feet.
Oh, I thought there was eleven-foot, maybe I'm.
The eleven-foot setbacks are.
That's side, generally, it's not a street setback.
It's a side-street setback.
Side-street.
In this location here.
Yeah? Oh, it's from the building, side of the building to the street, I understand. Yeah. Side of the building to the street, okay.
Yes, it's side of the building to the street.
Got it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All of the driveways are at least twenty feet long.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. They, I thought they all looked the same in the driveways. Okay, thank you.
Will you just give us a little bit of detail on the difference between public, public versus private road? If we're not dealing with the easements here, I, I feel like there could be a little more flexibility. But I, I guess, what is the difference with maintenance and with, you know, the public utilities that I guess wouldn't be going into a private road that may run along a public road?
Sure. There will be public utilities, as I said, for sewer, water, and storm sewer. The difference is that this is a private street, which is pretty typical for townhome projects. But when you have a private street, they're proposing that street to be twenty-four feet wide, and that's it. There's nothing beyond that for additional right-of-way per se. Public streets generally have extra right-of-way for drainage and utility easements and for actually providing private and public utilities along the street. In this case, they are, the utilities are identified. Let's see which plan. The sewer and water plan, which is shown, and they've got individual units being served. It's a little difficult to see on there. But you don't have that boulevard area, which you would have in a public street. Public street standard right-of-way is sixty feet with a thirty-foot street. And then in this case, for a private street, it's twenty-four feet. And the homeowners association will be responsible for maintaining all the sidewalks, the street, the reuse pond, also any private utilities. And then the city is responsible for where there are public utilities, which generally is along South Cross Drive within that right-of-way. There are public utilities for sewer, water, and storm sewer. And then there's also sanitary sewer that runs up actually on the adjacent lot between where these units are and where these regional pond and the lake are.
Thank you.
So these lots are all going to be privately owned, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. I think at this time, I'd like to have the applicant come out. And the applicant is here, correct? And just share any additional information you might have. We might have a few additional questions for you. I guess, for starters, I'd like a little bit of an update on how the neighborhood meeting went too.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff members. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Aziz Siddiqui. I am responsible for the entitlements and developments for the Midwest cities and the western part of the country for David Weekly Homes. And we are very excited, happy to be here, and looking forward for the development of this project. And Deb and Jen and have been extremely helpful and to the whole process. The idea that we came about when we saw originally the concept is to create a product that would serve and preserve the existing conditions that are out there because we thought they are very valuable to the project. And that's one big reason why we selected this product. And we are very successful with this product across the country. Burnsville will be the first city that we're going to introduce in Minnesota market. And hopefully, we're looking at a few of the parcels that are in the works that are going to bring this similar product into the city here. This product allows us to maximize the exposure on the amenities as Deb described for the detention basin and then the surrounding water bodies and also the, the tree preservations around the perimeter of the property. Having said that about the product, I wanted to take a step back and talk about why we did the way we did in terms of the number of units from what it was conceptually thought at one point in time by the sellers, so to speak. We, we were told very strictly from day one, we can't add more units. We need to stick with the units. If anything, we could go down. But looking at the economics, fifty-two makes sense from where we're sitting. And in the past, a lot of our projects, we are not in favor of long buildings aesthetic-wise and from the marketing aspect, what the market is looking for, what the buyers are looking for, the sellable part of it. Everybody wants N units. So what do we do? We come up with a desired building format where you have maximum N units possible and create that. That was one reason why we came up with three and four units. We are doing extremely well in the Washington Portland market for that matter. And then we thought this, this is wonderful because the reception was pretty awesome with people. Because, you know, they get to, as, as we were talking about, concerned about the light, the wind, and openness, bring as much of sunlight as possibly you can. So N units gives you that. So that's why we did the three units, majority out here, and then four units. We didn't want it to go, we have a luxury to go to five and as well as six. We could do that. We could give what Deb was talking about twenty-feet setbacks or fifteen-feet setbacks on those three N units. Now, here's, we have an awesome opportunity as a PUD to deviate from what the standard, the city is, is requiring, so to speak. I don't know if there is a single project in the city, I've asked this question in the past on the workshop and a couple of meetings and a few phone calls on the Zoom, are there any developments that are PUDs that are twenty feet that you guys have set the standard on? So there's really no example, as Deb pointed out, that they have a PUD with twenty feet. So if there is two or three buildings that are eleven feet, but gives us the maximum exposure to utilize what we have out there, we thought this would be the way to go on a PUD. This is not set in concrete, but we can take this approach and do that. We still have, as, as Deb pointed out, on the south end, we're thinking about a lot of openness. We want, because if you still drive on that street, I can't read the name of, yes, South?
South Cross?
Yeah, South Ross. If you drive on that street, even after development is completely finished, you will still not see the homes from outside with all the trees and everything else. The intent was to keep the perimeter as is even after the development is done. Now, if we were to go back and start creating those standard all across the city setbacks, we'll end up eating up all the trees out there. And I don't think that's going to make a lot of neighbors happy out there to begin with. So that was one of the thought from day one. What can we do to preserve that as you're pulling in from that South Cross? Can we maintain that? So this gave us an opportunity to do that. So we were very excited about that. And now, we, you know, the pond was a surprise to us. We didn't, we thought there's enough body of water there. We, you know, we should be able to go there with our stormwater. But then we were realized after talking to the engineering with Sambitac or, or our engineer on the project, no, 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 Aziz, we need to have a body of water within. We have to treat it and for irrigation purposes too. And we haven't done many projects that we go back and use the stormwater and then treat them and then use them for irrigation. We said, fine. and then use them for irrigation. We said, fine. I mean, if this gives us even more, uh, water body of the exposure to the homes, the better it is for the neighborhood. So really, just, you know, all in all, uh, I guess what I'm trying to address is why the setbacks are the way they are on, on these three, four units. We can pick them out, we can throw them in the south, and there's no need to talk about any variation going forward. So, uh, here we are with this. And, uh, as far as the product is concerned, we did the best we could to try to have some presentation because this is a new product. I wish we had a little bit more detailed plans on it, but I think our, uh, our design team did a very good job, given the timeframe we had, uh, to come up with this, uh, uh, scheme of color schemes so that, uh, the staff has a, you know, and, and the commissioners and yourself has an opportunity to look at all the combinations with different patterns and different mix of materials. Uh, so, you know, we have done this similar ones and, uh, in detached homes in, uh, Maple Grove, uh, well received, very well received. We have sold well over 100 units in the span of 14 months, very similar patterns. Uh, that would be a good product for some of you. If you want to go and look at us, I mean, look at the product, the site, uh, in Maple Grove, uh, that would be, give you an, an, a little bit of an, uh, opportunity of what kind of product in a high-density, uh, environment that David Weekley is, you know, putting out there. So, um, you know, and, and with that, I, I guess, uh, we will take the questions and, uh, you know, we'll open up as, you know, take the lead from Deb and, and go from there. Any questions?
Yeah, this is just, uh, these are just standard townhomes. This isn't 55 plus. This isn't anything for age, things like that.
No, no, no.
This is just?
No, this is not age restricted. Uh, we are looking for young families, uh, you know, um, parents, single parents with, you know, one or two kids or, you know, uh, three kids, um, move-up buyers. Uh, the price range, we haven't set it down as we, as I just said, we don't have a plan, uh, we don't have full finished plans on it. We are still developing the product. We are hoping to have this ready in the next 60 days or so, but we are targeting between 360 to low 400s. That's the, that's the goal we have. And we felt at the same time, going back, you know, the current apartment units that are being built, uh, this would be a good transition from the apartments to the townhomes to the single family. Uh, and the water body will separate that, uh, single family from where we are. So all in all, we thought th- this would be a good, good mix.
I'm just curious on how you feel about the, the flood, floodplain, the, the water tables there. Is there, uh, it seems really low to me. Uh, it's, um, below the, the grade. There's a lot of water ponds right in that area. I'm just curious. I'm flooding, things of that nature.
Um, great question. Uh, I, I think this is something that we have been, uh, looking at from day one. And, uh, the site has been engineered and I think Sambatech, uh, my friend here, uh, Eric might be in a better position to answer that question, but, uh, we did, we did address that. Uh, the current condition of the, of the, of the site and especially the soils are in, uh, needs a lot of attention. Uh, it's not here and there, seven feet or seven feet, 17 feet. It's all across. Every unit will have to be done that way. So all the bad materials, I think, uh, she was not able to answer the, uh, she didn't have the information on the, uh, when the fill started. Uh, the reports that we received when we came in started in 1989. Uh, a lot of dump happened in 1989 and then later on in 93, correct me on the years. Um, and, uh, and then we went, went out there. Uh, we thought if there was some other developer, uh, David Weekley, I'm very proud to work for David Weekley. We want to do the things right, the, the correct way. Uh, not only the, our local engineer advised us that we could go get away with consolidation and be able to build the, and he was ready to sign off on it. Then we had our, uh, national, uh, consultant we brought in to, to have a second opinion on it. And I myself have a geotechnical degree and I have experienced these soils in the past. So I said, no, we need to have a second opinion on this one. That's where we found out that, no, we need to go down all the way, remove it, start from scratch and, and get it done right. So there's, you know, going back to your question, yes, the whole site is going to get built up and we're, we're containing the water within the site and then only releasing as we need it, if needed at all. We have enough storage. Uh, we are out of the floodplain, uh, you know, and we are respecting, you know, the shoreline, the DNRs and the FEMA. And, uh, as Deb, Deb mentioned, uh, once the small pocket isolated, uh, wetland areas are filled, we'll do the, you know, a letter of map provisions, LOMAR, with the FEMA. It's a very standard generic process. We do that all across the country. It's a three-month process during the course of the final engineering. We'll get this wrapped up that way. So, yeah.
Commissioner Ward?
Yeah, you, you mentioned, um, you know, I think kind of the, the issue that we're, the only kind of sticking point is how close the buildings are together. And you mentioned one of the reasons that you don't have five and six-unit buildings is that so you can have more end units. That's a pretty easy way to get, you know, if these were all six-unit buildings, you'd be able to spread them out a little bit further. Um, you also mentioned you could put more units on the south side as an alternative.
If needed to. If, if, if the, if the, if the board and the council says, well, we need 20, you know, we're going to put our foot down or whatever. Yeah, okay. Then we'll eliminate a bunch of trees and then we'll have to fill up those areas, open areas.
Okay. So, so the area that, as I'm looking at this picture right there, there's kind of two, uh, guest parking spaces. And it says Twin, Twin Lakes, second edition, going this way. That's a potential building site, but right now that's being left as trees. And it's also, since the trees are there, it's an area where you don't have to do soil correction.
The trees are, trees are a little bit behind there, but there's, we wanted to create some immunity area. Uh, for, we haven't thought about that, but like a dog park or, or a hangout area. Uh, we are, we are creating, as you can see it, uh, in the center of the, the pond area. We have a fire pit, the walkways. The entire community will have a connectivity with the parkways from one corner to the other one. Uh, the, that's what really, uh, a beauty of this high dens, uh, high-density product, uh, that you really have a lot of room for people to walk around and, and everything else and still have an access to your own units.
Yeah.
Very enclosed.
So where you're not building a building, you don't have to do soil, soil correction? Is that correct?
Everywhere.
You have to correct the soil?
Everywhere.
Everywhere, except where the trees remain because you can't excavate them?
You don't need to do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, literally the entire site is a, is a, is a dump.
Yeah, yeah.
When I say the word dump, I mean it's a fill.
Yeah.
Of different kind of materials.
I can appreciate the kind of, uh, hoops you have to jump through to get this, you know, coming out of the ground. So I, I, and personally, I don't have a problem with the density aspect of it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ward. Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Henderson?
Just a quick question. If the buildings were to stay 11 feet apart, how close will the eaves be?
Uh, we will end up losing roughly around, uh, three feet at the, at the closest standing.
Yes.
Uh, but remember one thing. If you look at the building, they're not parallel. They're in, in an angle. So there might be one point, there might be nine feet or eight and a half feet.
So it's not consistently 11?
No, that's not how the buildings are. Uh, most of them. There's like one set and two set like that. Um, you know, but again, uh, that, that's the closest. Again, everybody's got their own perspective looking at it. Obviously, anything I will say will sound like I want to do this way. Uh, we want our neighborhood to look right, you know? We, we want our, we want our neighbors to feel right more than, more than us because at the end of the day, they're going to live there. And we, we want to be proud of what we leave behind.
Thank you.
Well, I respect your, sorry, I, I respect your flexibility too in the sense that, you know, there are other options. Um, you certainly know your, your market better than I do. I don't want to live in a townhome where I am, am trading an end unit for looking into somebody else's kitchen or living room or bedroom or whatever, uh, you know, eight to 11 feet away. But there are a lot of products similar to this that are built this close together throughout the country. Um, I, I guess, do you find success in, in selling these products that are as tight as they are here?
Uh, my colleague here, uh, can answer that better, but all I could tell you is, uh, we are as tight as three feet in high-density. And they are selling like hotcakes all over the place. Because as to Deb's point, these are all fire sprinklers. Uh, we respect the, uh, the window locations of, of these units. Um, so a lot of, lot of considerations has been done. It's just that we just, we have a staff of over 200 people on the, the, the design team, uh, to support the, uh, the product throughout the country. So there's, there's been a lot of thought given to it. Uh, we feel very strong about before we, we're bringing into the market. Uh, we are new here. Uh, we have been here for the last four years. We're still new. Uh, we are introducing product, uh, after product, and we have been received very well so far.
Thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah, I can't imagine you not taking into consideration window placement for that type of thing. Uh, my question was, I mean, obviously designs and I give you kind of a, uh, different perspective of things. Do you guys have a standard length for the driveways?
Uh, there is really no set strength for the driveways. Um, uh, we actually, uh, we just, we are wrapping up a new development in Anoka. We are very excited to be there too. Um, we just started entitlement same time as, as this, uh, uh, reserve at Twin Lakes. Uh, there were supposed to be 18, 18-feet driveways. So then we pushed it out to 20 feet because if somebody got to pick a truck, you don't want them to hang out in the driveway.
I was just going to ask that question. For the guy that owns a 19.6 truck?
Correct.
18 won't work.
No, 18 won't work. That's one reason we did that. And, uh, you know, to, to Deb's point, and she, and she was very kind when she pointed out, uh, we have a lot more parking spaces than normal. I, I'm, I don't live in Minnesota, but I feel sorry for a lot of people live here because of snow. You guys got a lot of snow here, right? So there, a lot of open area that could become a storage for snow, uh, during the, in the winter times because then you need to worry about where you're going to haul off, you know, whatnot. People need to get out of, to go to work and stuff like that. So, um, uh, for that purposes, I thought, why don't we just leave extra parking spaces that could potentially be used for storage for snow purposes? Um, and I want to correct, and I could be wrong, but I will confirm that too. I want to correct one thing that, uh, during her presentation, and I think it was, uh, uh, your question, Chair, uh, about the, uh, utilities. To our understanding, this project is 100% HOA responsibility. Sewer, water, storm, streets, streetlights, paving, curbs, sidewalks, landscaping, everything is private. So I just want to emphasize on that.
Yes, that will be through the development, but the development will connect to the main sewer.
Yeah. But there's a big difference. Anything on the property of the playat would be the HOA's responsibility. I just want to highlight that.
Do these units have basements in them?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move to a public hearing? All right. Well, thank you. And don't feel sorry for us, the snow and handling that is a point of pride. So.
All right.
All right. So we do have a public hearing tonight, and I would like to open the public hearing, uh, now at 7:30. 2 PM. Uh, had to wait a couple of seconds there. Um, and I will take a look to see if we have anybody who wants to comment on the telephone, uh, or via Zoom. Um, but I do want to remind folks that if they do, uh, wish to ask any questions or if they have any comments, to please address the commission, um, rather than staff or the developers. Um, and we will make sure the questions get answered appropriately. Um, at this point, I don't see any questions on Zoom or on the telephone. Um, and so I'm going to open the public hearing for folks who have joined us today. If you'd like to, uh, yep, step up to the microphone and address the commission, please state your name and address for the record as well.
You want to know where I live, huh? Uh, Scott Hemmway, 27 Geneva Boulevard in Burnsville. Um, question, the far east corner of the development, how close, I think I know the answer, but how close is that to the northern Twin Lake? And is there, from a development standpoint, any tree lines or any type of, well, let's call them tree lines, that separate the development from northern Twin Lake? And then the third question is, does the development have any direct access to northern Twin Lake? So in other words, um, do they have access via like launching a canoe or something like that, or fishing, or any type of amenities that would go with the project? And then maybe one more question, since I'm up here. Um, the access to South Cross, um, I assume there won't be a stoplight there? I'm seeing nods. So.
Let's try to take your questions and I might invite you back up if we don't answer them all. Um, but Ms. Geros, do you want to take a stab at his four questions? And then if we need to, we can have the applicant also address them.
On this map, i- it's kind of hard to see, but, um, the kind of little dots there are trees that are existing between the development site and the, um, the separate lot that Twin Lakes is on and the regional pond. So there are existing trees, uh, in that location. There won't be any public access from, uh, this development to Twin Lake other than if, uh, somebody decides that they want to, is anybody can from the public walk up that, uh, access that the city uses to the ponds, um, as part of a trail. But otherwise, this is physically separated, um, from the lot that North Twin Lake and the regional pond is located on. Um, and with the stoplight, I will, uh, ask our city engineer.
Did that address your questions?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. I believe we have, uh, Kyle Lenzin on Zoom who would like to, uh, ask a question or make a comment.
Well, there, thanks for letting me, uh, speak. It's a very, very nicely laid-out presentation. We did have a couple of questions and concerns, um, about the project and kind of the timing and, um, some safety concerns we had. So in the past three years, that this corner of kind of Burnsville sort of community, we've had a lot of development happen. So there's been a senior living development that's gone just north of the site. Uh, we have the new, uh, Rise on Grand now. So, so in, in this little quadrant now, it's gone from a small kind of neighborhood of 50, 60 houses to now we're adding kind of 280, 300 and some plus units, right? So 400 and some, um, residents. That, that, that's a big change to have. Um, some of the comments, when the Rise on Grand came, there was a lot of surveys done, a lot of studies done on the traffic. Um, and at the time, uh, we were told it was fine. Uh, trust them, it's fine. It'll work out. What I'm asking for is if we could have time to, 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 to show that it is fine before we kind of go on the next project, before we kind of, kind of keep this, this, this ball rolling here, just kind of take a little stop and just make sure that the developer was right and make sure that those kind of traffic concerns kind of leave you. And that there's nothing else we have to do. Because when, when, when this is done, you're going to leave. The developer will leave and there's no recourse. There, there's nothing that we get to do to fix the problems that are made, if there are problems that happen. So that was my first concern. It's just the, the timing of this. And if it's a six-month or a year wait, before we go on this path, that would be ideal. Uh, the second concern is more on kind of safety. Uh, we've had now in the last, so we've been here in seven years and a lot of the neighbors have, have been in this cul-de-sac of Geneva Boulevard. And so we are on the, the eastern, the northeast side of this property on development. There have been kind of zero police calls, um, in the last, uh, recently, except after these developments have started going in now. Um, in the last four months, we've had two calls, um, at 10 Geneva Boulevard. We've had one coming in off of, uh, the Breham Baptist Church, that their new parking lot development. So I, again, it, it's kind of twofold. One, back to the original point on, can we take a stop and wait and kind of make sure we do the right things for the safety and security of the neighborhoods? And second, are there things we can do on the development on these plans before anything's official to call out that these aren't public roads going into these private areas? Um, and that's, that's kind of, those are my big concerns we have at this point. So thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you. And while I have you, if you wouldn't mind just stating your address for the record, I didn't get that on the front end.
Yep, yep, not a problem. It's Kyle Lenzin, L E N Z I N, 22 Geneva Boulevard.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much. And we will try to address your questions here. And if we have any follow-up, I will let you know.
All right. Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I am going to move the traffic question to, well, I'll start with Deb, but it sounds like we also have Brian on the Zoom call who can address the historical traffic study that we have done in the last couple of years as well.
Yes, Brian Nemeth is with Bolton and Bank, and he's with our consulting engineering firm, and he can speak to the traffic.
Okay, Brian, if we can get you on, we would love to hear from you regarding the traffic on this project and how it kind of ties into the previous project, and also, it really hasn't come up but a potential Phase Three as well.
Yeah, so the traffic study that was completed by another consultant, we reviewed the, the traffic numbers that they did, looking at Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three, also incorporating all of the traffic numbers from the other developments that are in the area that the president had mentioned there, the Breon Baptist, the Medical Center, the Rise on Grand, of course, concluded with this. But all those developments were added into the study, so we understood, you know, what traffic's out there today, how much additional traffic is being added with all these certain types of developments. One thing of note, so when we say that everything will be fine, it's, there's different standards that we're looking at for IT trip generation, which is, is through transportation engineers, provides rates for different types of development. So that's the rates that we're using that were used on this traffic study and were appropriate. We're also looking at how much volume of traffic is on the roadways, and does that degrade the level of service that we're experiencing at intersections? Traffic study indicated that there is going to be no issue with that. We're at level of service A, which means very little delay, be most of the times of the day. And again, we have a little more delay during the peak hours, but all within acceptable limits. And any of this development is, is anticipated to add only a few seconds of delay to the overall intersection. And in speaking as part of the, the volumes that are out there, I believe any of the roadways we're looking at there, South Cross is about sixty-five-hundred vehicles a day. This development, based on the traffic studies, about adding about five-hundred vehicles a day to that roadway. A typical four-lane divided roadway like South Cross has a typical capacity of around twenty-four to twenty-five thousand vehicles a day. So you're definitely way below capacity on that. You're looking at one-hundred-and-forty-fifth up in that area. We have about twenty-five-hundred vehicles a day there. We're adding about five-hundred there, so we're looking at three-thousand vehicles a day. Typical capacity that you look at for two-lane roadway in kind of a, you know, mix of residential areas, anywhere between eight and ten thousand vehicles a day. So again, we're below that capacity range. So again, that, those are the numbers that we're looking at that indicate overall, the volume is not reaching anywhere near that capacity, and we're still at acceptable levels of service.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'm gonna ask for a little clarification from Mr. Lenzin, if he's still on the call. I wanted to get a little bit, I guess, more detail on the two police calls. Your question was regarding safety, Mr. Lenzin, and I, I just want to know what the, what the concern was. Were those traffic incidents?
Um, actually, well, there, there's kind of two things. So the incidents that the police were called on, those were actually trespassing incidences. Actually going into the yards from kind of going off of those, the walkways. So on the traffic side, it was more an issue on that uncontrolled intersection coming out forty-two on the grand. There's been a lot of near misses, and there's been a lot more lately of kind of near misses and accidents now. And that's before the Rising Grand is even done. So that was our concern. That, I, I know the math works for adding cars in South Cross for the ADM and five PM and that, right, the two P's, the math works. And if the math works for the controlled intersection at kind of forty-two in the light there. The, the problems we're having is when you add the four-hundred people, that Grand Avenue turn becomes a potential issue. And, and what we're looking for is more just timing to show us that it's fine. That I, I get the math, I get the numbers, but a six-month delay doesn't really cost anything. You know, let's the building finish, let people get into the building, even get half-capacity. And then you, you see a different dynamic that's gonna happen in these roads. That's a perfect time for a study. I think when the first study was done, there, there was no complex, there was no senior living complex at that time. It was at a development phase. There was no traffic related to that one, yet there's no construction traffic either.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lenzin.
Yep, thank you.
And Ms. Garros, to follow up on his earlier question about signage, does a development like this, are they required to have some sort of signage notating that it's a private road, private access, or that? They, I guess for the, the neighborhoods, you know, if they are finding issues with trespass, are, are there, you know, signage requirements that would alert people that they're leaving this, this enclosed community?
There, for private roads in Burnsville, they use a different color street sign than public roads. I believe they're brown, and then they usually indicate the address range, you know, for the addresses that are in there. For, if there's trespassing or issues where they think that there may be something that planning commission and council could look at is if there should be some fencing, privacy fencing installed. We have done that in the past, working with neighbors, you know, to look at fencing, maybe some additional landscaping for, if it's a view that's an issue. So those things are available for your consideration and would be common to try to address some of those issues for the neighborhood.
Okay, before I open it up for any further discussion, I just want to make sure that we've heard from everybody who wants to be heard tonight. I don't see anybody additional in chambers, and I do not have any indication that there's anybody on Zoom or on the telephone. So at this point, at seven forty-six, I will close the public hearing and open it back up to the commissioners for further questions, comments, concerns, thoughts, or otherwise.
We had this, we had this conversation a long time ago. Deb, you were there, too, and you were there, that where, when all this started, that had to be a year and a half ago, or whatever it was. When, for twenty years, this plot of land was nothing but woods and lakes. And I, I respect neighbors who didn't have anybody around, there was no traffic, it was quiet, it was nice. Aside from the church that was there, there was nothing, nothing else there. But then we look at progress, we look at just the way Burnsville's been growing and this prime real estate of where it's located and how easy access it is to the highways and things like that. Of course, we're gonna have contractors and developers come in looking for places to build. And with the new stuff that might be happening with our mall and things like that, there's a future involved in all of this. And all of a sudden, neighborhoods that were very quiet are no longer quiet. And I can see where that would be a shock to the system, to somebody who lives there, from a neighborhood standpoint. I totally can respect that. Unfortunately, that kind of goes with the territory of living in a city and not in a rural area. And I guess I trust more the, the staff who are doing the research and doing all of the numbers and checking the balances and everything, letting us know as commissioners that if we approve something, that yes, this is what they're expecting that is gonna happen, and it should be okay. The one or two offsets of a trespass and stuff like this, I don't know if we can really have any control over that. But in regards to what we're given from these staff and all the people that go beyond and, and behind the scenes that are doing all their work and all their diligence, to give us the information that we have and the presentations that these guys give, and all of the, the positives that come from something like this and the way it's gonna be put together, it's hard to take just one or two little offs and delay everything and change everything. This is just me personally, I'm talking on this right now. I think it's a beautiful project. I mean, the, the standard's high for who's gonna be here and what's gonna happen. It's private, the road going into it is private. Things like that are gonna come into play. So I very much respect from a Burnsville resident, the neighborhood aspect, for twenty years was very quiet. And I'm sorry to say that times change and things start to get developed, and now it's not gonna be as quiet. But the places that are being built here aren't shacks. These are beautiful buildings. The opportunity with what they have going on for the senior, everything that's going on is beautiful. And they're doing, doing it right. The way that they're doing their excavating and everything, I feel is, they're doing their diligence.
These are four-hundred-thousand-dollar homes that are.
Yeah, these are, this isn't low-income housing that is gonna be a hundred thousand dollars each. These, this is, this is some serious stuff. These are gonna be beautiful, and the people that are gonna live there are gonna spend money in Burnsville, they're gonna become neighbors. And I can't imagine them not respecting where they live, you know? That's kind of where I'm coming from. You can't build individual homes there, there's just no room for it. You can't put in streets and do everything, this is the optimal thing to do. So unfortunately, this is progress, and this is what happens here. And thank you, staff, for giving us all the information we need to make decisions on this stuff, because it really does help.
One man's perspective.
Yeah, that's it, that's it, yep.
Thank you, yep, thank you, Deb, for an excellent presentation on a very complex project with a lot of, you know, conditions. And thank you to the applicant for, you know, working with the city to kind of figure out how to make all this work. I just wanted to say, I personally, I don't have a problem with the two separation issue. And part of my thinking is that, you know, I, it's like the hottest neighborhood in Minneapolis is Linden Hills, and all those houses are ten feet apart, you know, they have five-foot setbacks on a forty-foot lot. And so, you know, I don't, that's one reason I don't have a problem with the building sep, the building separation. The other one is that, you know, these are three- and four-unit buildings where the separation between unit is zero. And so I think that's something that, that is not a problem for me. And I'd say similarly with the street setback, I don't, I don't have that big of an issue with the street setback. That's all I, all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner John?
I, I agree with the other two commissioners' comments. I do have reservations, however, is, is in the floodplain and, and the, the water tables and things like that. But if, if Ms. Lloyd could speak, is there any concerns for that on, on your end?
Commissioners, good evening. With the regional pond work that will be done, that will help with some of that compensatory flood storage. So again, that project that the, that the city is initiating, that it sounds like has initiated, and with some public comment, will be available next month with then the project going forward next year will, will help with some of that.
But there's no concerns of?
No.
We're selling land that is really swamp or anything on those lines?
No, no concern there.
Great. Outside of that, that, that was my biggest fear. Traffic, I understand that, and I think the biggest concern is, is thirty-five E and thirty-five W. How much traffic is gonna be backing up as they, you know, build out that area? But again, that's gonna be something that we're gonna have to correct as we go along. Because whether we like it or not, these lands are gonna be filled in. That's just, that's just what Commissioner Roberts was getting at, this, just the way cities work, and that's where we're at. So I, I am in agreement with all the other commissioners, that I, I think these properties are gonna be beautiful, and I think it's, I, I really appreciate you coming into Burnsville. You said this is your first property in Minnesota, or one of the first?
What was it, I'm sorry?
One of the first properties in Minnesota?
No, I think this would be our sixth or the seventh.
Oh, never mind.
It's gonna be the seventh.
Seventh.
Seventh, okay.
Yes, and then four more on the hopper, so we, we are here to stay.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said.
As far as what I have to say about it, I have, you know, very strong recollections of our conversations about the traffic study just under two years ago. And I remember talking about the safety and the vehicle numbers at that time. And I, for me, nothing's changed. It's still the same project, it's still the overall three phases, plus the senior complex near the church that have all been, you know, diligently considered in that study. As far as the trespassing issues, I mean, I, just personally, I am concerned by that a little bit. But I, I also recall that with Phase One, there was a lot of talk about keeping a certain amount of coverage with the trees and the, and the buffer between the projects and the existing homes. And so I think the developers, you know, to date have, have tried to honor that. With this particular project, I don't see, I don't see there being issues. I think that the development is set significantly further back from the existing homes than what we've looked at previously. Like I said, I don't necessarily love the idea of living eleven feet from my neighbor, but at the same time, the amenities that are on this property, like every home's front facing a lake or a pond, that potentially could be used as a community resource. I, I think that's unique in our city. I also remember conversations about best practices for city development. And this property previously was zoned for commercial. And the traffic studies that we looked at two years ago actually identified that traffic would likely be greater in some circumstances if some type of clinic were built, or, you know, something that has all-day traffic from customers or clients. So I don't know, there, to me, there's, there's a lot of benefits to this project. I think it's nice, I like the product, short of the fact, I, I don't want to be eleven feet from my neighbor, but I'll stop saying that. I, frankly, I can live with the deviation there that has been presented or, or remove that recommendation. I know that, you know, we've, we've kind of talked about that already, but I just want to make sure before we open this up for a motion that, that people are on board with removing those particular requirements, the eleven feet between buildings, and then I believe it was the, the twenty feet from the, the private street curb.
Some people don't like living in a rambler. If you're gonna buy this, you know you're eleven feet from your.
No, I, I, I totally.
I, I know where you're coming from, but for the people I know that do live in townhomes, they don't mind.
No, and, and I, I see the benefits of it, I think that there's.
They're there because they don't want to mow.
Yeah.
That is a good idea.
And you're eleven feet from your neighbor if you're on an end unit. If you're in a middle unit, you're zero feet from your neighbors.
Yeah.
It's a good point. I don't, I don't think it's a, I think it would.
On my end, I was just worried, concerned because staff had a question about it. However, if, if there's no safety issues, if it's all just, you know, whether or not the neighbor's noise and air and light is, you know, it, it, then I'm fine with it. It's, like, like you guys said, it's, it's what you buy.
Yeah.
You, you know what you're getting when you go into it.
So are there any further comments or questions? If not, I think we're ready for Mr. Roberts.
I can do that for you. I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the application of Weekly Homes LLC for development stage plan and unit development, floodplain conditional use permit to allow work in the floodplain of North Twin Lake, shoreline CUP for impervious service coverage, shoreline variance for lakeshore setbacks, preliminary and final plat of a fifty-two-unit residential townhome plat to be known as Twin Lakes Residential Second Edition, subject to the following, and Deb, excluding the first two, that would make it eighteen conditions.
That's correct.
Okay, I'd like to exclude the first two, just take them off there, and then the following eighteen conditions going from number three to number twenty.
Thank you. Commissioner Wad?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Wad seconds. Any further discussion? Commissioner John?
Do we need to, the traffic study's already been done, correct? I just want to, these fine people came in, people got on the call. I just want to address our issues as well, as long as there's a traffic study being done, and, and we are looking for traffic issues. As long as there's a traffic study being done, and we are looking for traffic issues going forward, I don't know if it's something we need to add to the motion or not. It's just a thing that popped in my head. But I'm assuming, I don't want to add anything, so.
So that was just a comment?
It's just a comment.
Thank you. Commissioner John? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, that is the meat and potatoes of the agenda tonight, and I will move to any updates. Planning commissioners, do you have any updates? Staff, any updates?
No updates, just wanted to let people know that this item will go to the city council next week on Tuesday evening, and that's the 20 second. And the city council meeting starts at 5:30 p.m.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night. All right, thank you. And finally, as a reminder, members of the public can submit additional public comment related to the items on this evening's agenda until 4:30 p.m. on Friday, September 18th, 2020. The comments will be included with the city council background for consideration. If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I apologize, but before we do that, Ms. Madden?
That's okay, I just wanted to let you guys know. So your next planning commission meeting is going to be Monday, September 28th. Right now, it looks like we're going to have two items on that agenda, so there will be a planned unit development amendment for Prince of Peace Church. They are amending their planned unit development to work out some parking changes to their lots in their area. And then we will have a discussion item from a planning commission work plan related to the landscaping ordinance. So we will have one of our planning consultants come in and kind of give an overview of some of the research that they've been doing for staff on some possible landscaping suggestions. And those are all my updates.
And potentially, an ordinance amendment for accessory dwelling units.
Potentially, and another ordinance amendment related to our accessory dwelling units. I'm not sure if you have been watching some of the recent city council meetings. There was a discussion based item on one of their agendas where they have directed staff to prepare an ordinance amendment. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Roberts?
With nothing else to be said, I move to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Henderson seconds, all those in favor say aye.
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 And the motion carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.